Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the February 6, 2019 Board of Ed meeting to order. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note the emergency exits on both sides of the common room in case of an emergency. This evening, John O'Shea is not able to be with us tonight, so we're going to -- we were missing him tonight, but we're going to proceed. So we are starting out. We see a lot of cuties from Wilson here tonight. We're excited to have you. So, Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I'm just going to turn this right over to Mr. Duffy, the principal at Wilson School, and ask him to introduce the teachers and the students and tell us a little bit about STEAM at Wilson School.
Is this on?
Hello?
Well, good evening, and thank you all for coming tonight. And thank you, students, for taking time out of your night to come present to the board. Tonight, you're going to see a project that came through Stellar. Stellar stands for Success in Technology, Enrichment, Literacy, Library, and Research. And it's one of, really, I think, one of the great programs that we have in the elementary schools in Rockville Center. Some amazing teachers have come through to talk stellar in the past. But it gives a great opportunity to give enrichment to students, to support the classroom teachers, to incorporate technology, and to give children a great chance to be creative, do engineering-type projects. And Wilson is very fortunate to have two wonderful Stellar teachers, Ms. Lacey Law and Ms. Mary Messina. So I'm going to turn it over to them, and they'll talk a little bit about the owl project that you're going to see tonight. Thank you. This may be a little bit intimidating, but get a little camera. The eye of the world is watching Wilson School tonight. So, if you don't mind, so that we can have some sound associated. I don't know, who's going to be speaking? If you don't mind.
All right.
All right.
Grade two, you can grab your projects. Courtney, you want yours on the table? Please leave yours where you need it. Grade three, come on up. Joey, you can come on up. I might ask you when you're presenting to just step forward so that we can really focus on your project.
All right, good eve -- Does this sound like it's on? Good evening, I'm Lacey Law. This is Mary Messina. We're the Stellar teachers at Wilson. This past fall, we presented our students with a STEAM challenge, which was to create a nest or a home for an owl. The nest or home had to keep the owl warm and comfortable. It had to protect it from predators, and it had to blend in with its environment. They could use any materials from nature or from their homes. And we had more than 70 students participate, which is great because it was an optional challenge that they were doing outside of school in their spare time. So we're going to hear a little bit from each student about their STEAM challenge. We can see that they're all very different. We're going to start with Anthony Selechia. Anthony? Oh, yep, they were chosen to present tonight. Very, very proud to be here. Very excited. Anthony, your question is, how do the objects in your nest help to keep the owl warm and comfortable?
Which owl?
If there was an owl in your nest, how do the objects in your nest keep it? Yup, he named his owl in his nest. What's its name?
Jimson. Julia had to say it.
And how does your nest keep him warm and comfortable?
There's feathers, sticks, which is weird, and very -- and strings, and pine cones.
Excellent, thank you, Anthony. Next up, we have Alex Bandanza. Alex, you're going to just walk forward. Girls, just let Alex come through a little bit. You're going to stand right in front. Alex's is this one right here. I'm going to pull it forward a little bit. Just watch your head, huh? Alex, your question is, what was the most difficult part of creating your project?
Finding all the materials to put on it and, like, trying to make them fit, and cutting all the pieces, and, like, nailing them together.
Excellent, thank you, Alex. Our next presenter is -- let's go to --
Emma, what materials did you use for your nest? I know you went into nature, maybe in your backyard, and what did you find?
I found some leaves and one acorn.
Thank you for sharing. Charlotte, what did you use to build your nest?
Sticks, feathers, and glow.
And did you also use a balloon to get the shape of your nest?
Yes.
Kenny, what materials did you use?
A bowl, and some pipe cleaners, and a stick.
Did you also use pom poms? Thank you. Maeve, why did you choose to put three popsicle sticks in front of your owl's home? And I'll show this so everyone can see.
I put them there because I wanted the owl to have a place to stick out and look for predators. If he sees one, he could run right back in, and he will be safe because the opening is too small for his predators. And the popsicle sticks make a nice porch.
Beautiful, thank you. Julian decided to add two rocks to his nest. Julian, why did you do that?
I decided to put two rocks in Baby Echo's nest because the rocks helped Baby Echo practice his hunting skills.
Excellent, thank you for sharing.
All right, next up is Liam Quinn. Liam, what was the most fun part about making your owl home?
My -- the most fun part about making my owl home was wrapping it in camouflage so that it blended in predators to protect the owl from predators.
Thank you. Next up, we have Courtney. Where's Courtney? Courtney Barberato. Courtney, what steps did you take to create your owl nest?
First, we found the cardboard base. Then, my dad and I cut a hole. Next, we found bark in our backyard. We dried it out and glued it on. That is how I made my owl nest. It was a fun STEM challenge.
All right, thank you, Courtney. Next, we have Myra Gorillo. Myra, you're going to just scooch through. Myra, how does your owl home camouflage with its environment?
In the winter, it will blend in with the snow and white.
Excellent, thank you, Myra. Jenny Cutler. Jenny, you want to walk around and introduce your project? Jenny's question is, how does your owl home camouflage with its environment?
The nest is made of twigs and leaves, so it can blend in the trees in the forest.
Excellent, thank you, Jenny. Joey Hunsberger. Joey, how does -- how does your nest keep the owl safe from predators?
It kind of, like, closes its eyes, and then, like, it camouflages, like, with the leaves and sticks, and then, like, the predator can't see it.
Thank you, Joey. And Lila Torres. There you are. Lila, what objects did you use to -- well, where is your owl, your nest? Excellent. Lila, what objects did you use to create your owl nest?
I used paper, paint, leaves, pipe cleaners, and a cardboard box.
Excellent, thank you, Lila.
Ms. Law and I would like to thank the Board of Education for giving us this opportunity to share this valuable project-based learning experience, which helps develop the collaboration among students, problem-solving, and critical thinking skills. We look forward to more STEAM activities. We would also like to thank the wonderful, creative engineers for participating and presenting tonight. They did a great job. We're very proud of you. Well done.
One question. How would you like, if you were an owl, to live in your little house? You think you'd be safe in that house? Yeah. I'm absolutely blown away by the creativity that they used tonight in putting these things together. So I not only want to thank you, thank all of you for bringing your children tonight. Really is a treat for all of us. Thank you both very much. Jim, thank you. All right.
Lacey, what's the name of the kid that built the big house, Dr. James' home? Alex?
Yeah, it's almost big enough, right?
Yeah, both go in the picture. Mary, go in. Go in the picture.
One, two, three, big smile. One more, big smile. One, two, three.
Anthony, good job, buddy. Ray, you're welcome.
Oh, my God, how long have you been here? Yes, it's been a while.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's cute, thank you.
Ginger. How cute. And you look just like her.
How funny.
Yeah.
It's so funny, oh my goodness. I will do that, thank you. It's all good, everybody's fine, yeah. Thank you so much. I know, it's funny, isn't it? Nice to see you. My father used to work with Regina Selechia's father back in the day. Like, I used to play with Regina's husband when I was a kid. We were all the same age. My dad worked with his father. So she knows my mom from, you know, way, way back. So funny. So where are we going to go when they do the screening?
Nice job.
It's going to kind of --
Good work.
Over here, maybe?
Good night, thank you.
Our heads are, like, right -- well, mine is definitely right. We should go sit in the audience? Then how do we ask questions? That's the hard thing. I think I might just go back there, follow on, and then we can scoot back over. Once he gets through it, they don't need the screen anymore, right? Or just go sit, like, open your suit. Well, just take -- they can take these with us. If we're going to kind of sit by you. Yeah, 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 right. We'll just kind of scoot over. Just in case we have questions, we still have the, um, yeah. Yeah, that's good. So we'll just -- we'll scoot over. It's thinning out quite a bit. I know, I know, I used to do that to people. I used to be like, wait. Put them on the spot, would you like to stay? I used to do that. Forgot to say something to Jackie, so I don't know, what do you think? It's not a very heavy crowd, so what do you think? So, when you open the mic, if you want to, say Jackie, do you want to? Okay, okay. Those people you cannot see. Can you see that on the camera now? That's 40 minutes. Well, why don't we just move it now? It's better to just do it now, so we can just kind of roll into the next thing. Now, it makes more sense. Yeah. Are we going to resume? Yeah. It is, it is.
Okay, thank you for -- Mr. Duffy, thank you, Mr. Duffy, and Wilson, thank you. We're going to move on now to the Youth Pride Survey. Dr. Johnson?
I'm actually going to toss this right back to Dr. Leahy, who really coordinates this entire effort within the school district. Dr. Leahy?
So I've talked to the board a couple of different times about the work of the district's Drug, Alcohol, and Violence Prevention Task Force. And that's the force, the task force that was set up to work to stop the use of substances among our youth and destructive decisions. And many of you know that we are now aligned with the Rockville Center Coalition for Youth, which is a Rockville Center community-wide organization, of which we are one of the 12 sectors. And we have exactly the same mission working with that coalition, which has been very energizing. We're going to actually have a presentation on the work of the coalition in an upcoming board meeting. But tonight, I want to talk to you about the administration of something called the Youth Pride Survey, which is facilitated by these groups. The survey is going to be for students in grades eight through 12, and it's designed to improve our community's ability to identify the protective and risk factors that might lead to or prevent the use of substances in our community. So what I mean by a risk factor is, you know, in order to stop a problem from happening, we want to know what puts us at risk for it happening in the first place. So that's identified in this survey, both -- and they divided it into three categories. What are the risk factors in the community? What are the risk factors at home? And what are the risk factors in school? The protective factors, the opposite. They exert a positive influence, and they'll stop or curtail the use of substances and destructive decisions amongst our youth. This survey tries to assess a student's use of drugs, alcohol, and also propensity to bully or beat, or if they were bullied, and any other violent or aggressive act. So we administer this survey every other year. And gathering information on those risk and protective factories is a really important reason for doing it alone. But we're also required to do it, and we're required to do it for two reasons. The first is that we are mandated, we receive subsidies from an organization called the Office of Alcohol and Substance Abuse Services in New York, or Oasis. And those subsidies allow us to put at least part of our social worker, one of our social workers, at the high school. So I'm here to introduce our new person in that role. This is Katie Yamand. She's a licensed social worker who works in the high school, and she is our Oasis social worker for the district. So that's one reason we have to do it. We have to prove that what we're doing in this district is working or having some effect. The other is that it's a requirement of the grant, the federal grant, that the Coalition for Youth won and has been using for the last several years, and is about to request again. So for those two reasons, we do these surveys. Katie, along with a couple of members from the coalition, is actually going to administer the survey. The dates are March 21st and March 22nd at the middle school and the high school. The students take the survey during their physical education classes. Takes about 30 minutes-ish, about 108 questions. There are copies of those surveys in blue folders outside on the table. We can't distribute them for you to take home and study, nor can you take pictures of them or anything like that because we risk invalidating the survey. But if you'd like to look at them, you could do that. Our people personnel staff also helps administer the survey, just in case kids have questions as they're taking it or showing, expressing any signs of worry or concern as they're taking the survey. The survey is voluntary and anonymous. Very shortly, parents will be receiving a letter via email, and that letter will explain a lot of the information they're giving out here this evening. And it will also allow the parents to send in a declination of consent. The district uses a passive consent, so if you don't send anything back, we know that you are okay with your child taking the survey. If a parent does not want their child to take the survey, they just send that written declination of consent back to us. Also, the surveys are going to be made available in the main offices of the high school and the middle school for the weeks leading up to the survey administration in March. Once the survey's taken, we get some results, and usually, either in late spring or early fall, we'll make another presentation, and we'll give out the results of those surveys to the public. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Dr. Leahy, is this, this is not a new survey. We do, we've done these surveys for years. Is this different? This seems much more extensive than the surveys we've done in the past.
This changed two surveys ago, where they started to include more questions about bullying and discrimination and violence. The original surveys that we did were more just tuned in directly about substance use. But for the last couple of surveys, they've been this long and included all of those questions.
And did we have any negative feedback the last time that we gave the survey?
Negative feedback about taking the survey?
About taking the survey, or did any of the questions seem upsetting to the kids? I mean, I think just --
Not this last administration?
It's quite extensive, so if anybody goes to read it, I don't, you know, just, we've done this before.
We have done it before. Actually, this will be the fourth time since I've been in this job. It's about every other year we do it. This last administration, there was no issues at all. The time before that, there was some concern of parents of seventh-grade students that thought the language was too advanced for them, and they had not really been exposed to these terms before. Here, they were seeing it in this survey. So we made a decision at that point that we would raise the level of the grades taking the survey to eighth to 12th rather than seventh through 12th, which we've been doing ever since.
But we don't, we didn't create the survey, and we don't really have any choice. And it's not, we can't take a simpler survey? This is, this is it?
No, this is the one where we get statewide results. This is the validated survey. This is a survey that's approved by the Oasis group, the state organization, where we receive our subsidies. Yes?
I'm sorry, do you work at the school? Are you a counselor for the students?
Yes.
And you're employed by the school district or by Oasis?
Katie is a social worker employed by the school district.
Okay, thank you so much. Just want to point out that this is a public work session, so we don't have traditional mic time tonight. We will be opening the mic at two different portions of the program, and I'd like to just point out what they are. After we hear the presentation on the designation of success stability, we will open the mic, and after we hear the proposed budget, we will also open the mic for those topics only for this evening. So if there's any other questions on the topics that are not included there, we would have to hold them until another meeting, okay? Thank you. So we're going to move on to the New York State report on graduation rates.
Yes, this will be very brief. We appeared in Newsday twice last week, once for fiscal stress, which Mr. Bartels will talk about in just a few moments. And the second time was freely for good news, where they did some comparisons between and among the Long Island schools in both Suffolk and Nassau County on graduation rates. This is a report we get every year from the state, which shows the percentage of kids who graduate with a region's diploma, with a region's diploma with advanced designation. It shows also the percentage of disabled students who graduate, and then the percentage of students who are economically disadvantaged. Just so you know, where Rockville Center stood, and this was a table that actually appeared in Newsday, so it was made available to everybody. The percentage of graduating high school with a region's diploma, there of the 100 and, I believe it's 127 school districts on Long Island, Rockville Center was number three. The only two ahead of us was Manhasset and Fisher's Island. If you are familiar with Fisher's Island, it's a little island off of the state of Connecticut that has about 60 kids in its school. It's a one-house, one-room schoolhouse. But nevertheless, we were two in Nassau, number two in Nassau County, and number three on Long Island. In terms of the percentage of students who graduated with an advanced designation, which is really the region's answer to preparing kids for continuing education, we were number two in Nassau County and number two on the island. With the numbers of kids who graduated with a region's diploma who were also disabled, again, we were three in Nassau County and three on Long Island. The percentage of kids who graduated who were also economically disadvantaged was a bit of a problem for me because there were a number of schools that were identified as 100%. And they were, that was more than their percentage of graduating seniors, which didn't make a whole lot of sense to me. But discounting the school districts that were listed as 100%, for example, Jericho was one of them. We were number four on the island, and number four in Nassau, three in Nassau County. So I know that -- So I know that very often, people don't want to hear about numbers, but nevertheless, and we don't try to tell our story using numbers, but the numbers do make a difference, because they are things that people examine and look at. They do appear in newspapers, and in one sense, they are used by rating agencies to, in fact, evaluate the efficacy of our instructional programs. The state uses them to compare us to others around the world, and I will say that I'm very proud to be a part of an incredible system that does, and I think lives up to all of the expectations of the people who move here and live here in this community and want to have their children educated in these public schools. So that just, I just, we always get mixed messages, because the, the other side of this is, oh my God, we're in fiscal stress. But there's also some very good news, and that is that the money that people are investing in the education system is working to the benefit of all of our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the presentation for the designation of susceptibility to fiscal stress by New York State Controller.
Well, I'm just going to turn this right over to Mr. Bartels. He has a presentation. I know both of us were pretty upset when we saw it initially. We didn't get a whole lot of opportunity to respond before it appeared in the newspaper. But nevertheless, it is part of the world in which we live, and again, getting back to numbers, it's all based upon a series of thresholds that the state uses, either correctly or incorrectly, to determine whether or not a school district is, is in fiscal stress. So, Mr. Bartels, if you would just help us out.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. What I wanted to do is kind of go through and just give a brief overview of what we consider our financial condition, some of the factors that led to this stress designation, and then the actual calculation of the, of the, of the actual point values and the numbers and how they came up with this, and then where we fall into it, what we were last year, or two years ago, what we were last year that led to this designation. First, we are in healthy fiscal condition. We're not going bankrupt. We don't have, we're not running out of money. We are financially stable. We manage our finances. The numbers that came up were not a surprise. They were really where we had planned them to be. We manage our fund balance very carefully, and we use it every year in the determination of what the new budget is going to be. We've always had a relatively low fund balance number. We've talked about that several times in prior budget discussions. Many other school districts cited by the Controller's Office for stowing away too much money, having extra money in other reserves, and so forth. We've never been that high-end district. We do use our reserves to help manage, manage the budget and the different programs we have, so we can maintain everything, so we don't have to cut programs. We do have a history of being fiscally conservative. We have not overtaxed the public in the past just to build up those reserves. We've never felt the need to do that. This board and prior boards see no reason to build up excess reserves just to have, just to have a large fund balance. The key number this year that has been bumping the number up, the total fund balance that we have, we know that's low. The number that got to me personally was the increase in tax anticipation notes, because we get different point values based on how much we're increasing those short-term borrowings, but it has nothing to do with the amount of the borrowing. It has to do with how much you're increasing from the previous year. So we've increased the last couple of years because we used to have money from the bond and cash reserves that we were using, you know, fiscally to manage our budget, so we didn't have to borrow as much. Well, since that money from the bond is gone, our borrowings have gone back up, but they're not going back up higher than they have been six, seven, eight years ago. Wanted to mention, we don't have any financial condition concerns raised by either our internal or our external auditors. We've all had, we've had very good audits, and I guess most importantly, this designation does not have any impact on our taxes. It's not going to change anything. Each budget that we do from year to year stands alone. We'll talk about the budget for next year a little bit. We're really not talking about our fund balance when we talk about the budget. We talk about our expenses and our projected revenues, and we want to make sure we match those, so we have a balanced budget. If we need to use some fund balance, we may talk about that at some time. We're not planning on doing that, and so this, this designation or the amount we have in our reserves is going to have no impact on taxes for the community. This chart is an example of our total fund balance. You can see it starts in '08, '09, down near $8 million. Came up to a high of a little over $11 million in '12, '13, and then it is kind of stabilized. Came down a little bit, went up a year, came down. Every year, like I said, the budget, the revenues and expenses, the budget that we do, stands separately from our fund balance. What we do every year is we try to build in about $2.8 million that we're going to apply in the following year's budget. What that $2.8 million is, either we're underspending our budget by the $2.8 million, or we may underspend the budget by $2 million and pick up an additional $800,000 in revenue. So between the combination of the two, we try to get to that $2.8 million. If there's a year where we find we have $3 million left over, we'll add $200,000 to fund balance. If at the end of the year, we have $2.6 million left over, that means our fund balance would decline by $200,000. But we try to keep that number pretty stable, and we felt that's, you can see, kind of over the years, we've been pretty stable on a total amount of fund balance. Next slide is our total fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. And again, you see this is a fairly flat line. The numbers have been pretty much the same. And in '08, '09, it was slightly under 10 percent, and in '17, '18, it's slightly under 10 percent. We'd gone up a little bit, and then we came down a little bit, but again, that's based on our expenditures. Our expenditures have been going up while we've been maintaining our fund balance pretty much stable. So as that fund balance stays about the same and our expenses go up, that line is going to continue to drop a little bit. The fact that it dropped below 10 percent was one of the factors that caused, caused that stress designation. This chart shows the borrowings that we've had. And you can see, back in '08, '09, and '09, '10, we had borrowed $11.5 million, which is exactly the amount we borrowed in '17, '18, that they, that they gave us the designation for, and we got a number of points for. In '11, '12, we had borrowed $12 million. In '13, '14, we actually borrowed $15 million. But then we issued the bond of $35 million in December of 2014. So we had that money available for the '14, '15 school year, the '15, '16 school year, as we're paying off expenses from the bond, as that heavy construction was going on and we were paying them off, we had the money from that bond on hand, so we didn't have to borrow as much. So we dropped the amount of our borrowings. So for the last couple of years now, we dropped to a low in '15, '16 of about $8 million. So for the last two years, we've now gone back up, because we don't have that money from the bond sitting there anymore. That project is completed, the expenses have been paid, so now we're kind of back up to where we had been. So, so we felt that that was almost an unfair designation, because it had nothing to do with the amount of money that was borrowed. It was just the fact that you had increased from previous year.
Robert, I'm sorry. I'm going to interrupt you. Can, if you go back for a second, can you explain how you decide the amount of our ten borrowings? How do you determine what we're going to borrow from year to year?
It's really based on our cash flow, how much money we have on hand. So if, if our fund balance goes up a little bit, we may borrow a little bit less the following year. If, if the money is down a little bit, we may borrow a little bit more. A lot of it depends on, sometimes the state is holding money from us that we know we're going to get. Typically, we borrow, just for the public, these tax anticipation note borrowings is because we don't get our tax money until the first monies start coming in on October. So we're spending monies that we have from the prior year in July, August, September, October, for payrolls and other expenses, before we actually get our, the major source of our revenue, which is the tax money. So we have to go out and borrow short-term, so we have some money to cover for that. If we find we have some additional expenses, if we didn't get all the revenue that we were supposed to get from the state, or they're holding back, sometimes they've held back monies, we're supposed to get it by June 30th. There's a portion of money that we don't get until August and then September. So we have to look at that carefully, and over the summer, we do an analysis, how much money we have on hand, how much money we need to borrow to get us through until we get those tax revenues that begin coming in in October. And there's a number of calculations that go into that. We have a fiscal advisor that we look at, that looks at these numbers for us, and we try to borrow as little as we can, obviously to try to save money on borrowing costs.
Thanks.
Yes, sir?
We, we're going to have questions at the end of the presentation, okay?
This slide is just kind of a compilation of the three slides, so again, it just helps determine, sometimes as we're borrowing money, look at the money we have on hand. So sometimes you'll see in '12, '13, we had a little higher fund, money going towards fund balance, we borrowed a little bit less. In '11, '12, where you saw a little bit dip in the amount of fund balance we had, we borrowed a little bit more. So, I mean, it's not a perfect match, and there are sometimes outside influences like that bond issue, but for, for most intents purposes, we kind of follow that line to see what we're going to borrow. So we should be pretty much stable in the $11 to $12 million borrowing range. Now to the designations itself from the state. These are generated by the Office of State Controller. They're just certain conditions that they decided that they were going to look at all school districts and make certain calculations to determine if they felt the districts were in fiscal stress. What they use is year-end fund balance, two pieces of it. There's an unassigned piece of fund balance, which is what they consider rainy day funds, and a total fund balance, which is the total amount of money that we have in reserve, either undesignedated or designated for certain expenditures. They look at the operating deficit, which is how much you have in revenue versus how much you have in expenditures each year. They look at the cash position in two ways. They take your cash on hand at the end of the year, match it against your short-term liabilities, and also match, match your cash against your average monthly expenditures. And then the last piece is the reliance on the short-term cash flow, which is the tax anticipation notes. Each category is assigned to point value. So for each of the different values, you see unassigned fund balance and total fund balance make up 50 points, so a big part of that is fund balance. I find it interesting, because a lot of these are interconnected, so if you have a lower fund balance, lower unassigned fund balance, your cash ratio is going to be lower, and your cash percentage is going to be lower. So some of these are kind of intertwined, but all these point values add up to 100 The designations that the state comes out with, up to 24.9 points is no designation. If you're between 25 and 44.9, you're considered susceptible. If you're between 45 and 64.9, moderate, and significant fiscal stress is above 65, between 65 and 100. And this is the way the calculations are done. So for the unassigned fund balance calculation, they look at the unassigned fund balance divided by the gross expenditures for that particular year, and they have the different point values based on what, where your percentage falls. The unassigned fund balance, school districts are allowed to keep up to 4 percent, according to the state and the Controller's Office. They don't allow us to keep more than 4 percent. There are some districts that have done that, and they have been, you know, been recognized by the state and given comments about that in their, in their audit reports. We've, haven't been at 4 percent since it really came out. We're typically around 3 percent. This past year, we dropped below 3 percent. And we'll show those calculations in a minute. I'm going to go through the calculations first and then show you kind of where we stood in each of these. So the total fund balance calculation is, is our total fund balance, again, divided by gross expenditures, and then they're assigned to point values. The operating deficit is a comparison of your revenues versus your expenditures in the last three fiscal years. So they take the gross revenue, subtract your gross expense, and then divide that by the gross expense. And they consider you having a deficit if that number ends up to be less than a negative 1 percent. So they allow your revenue to be less than your gross expenses by up to 1 percent before they're going to start calculating points. Cash position, the cash position is your total available cash at year-end divided by your net current liability, which are mostly designated reserves. So you take the cash available in your reserves, and you divide it by your liabilities, your restricted fund balance reserves, and that's one, one ratio. The other ratio is that same cash number divided by your average monthly gross expense. And again, they come up with different percentages and assign point values for those. The last one is reliance on short-term cash flow. They look at the difference in your borrowings from the prior year. Again, it doesn't have anything to do with how much you borrowed, but it's a difference in the borrowing from one year to the next. And again, the same point value calculations. Now for Rockville Center, our unassigned fund balance in fiscal year ending 2017 was 3.05 percent, so we had no points generated in that year for that category. For fiscal year ending 2018, we were down to 2.26 percent, so we were in that second category of 8.33 points. Our total fund balance calculation in fiscal year 2017 was 10.35, again, above 10 percent, so there were no points assigned. This year, we were between 5 and 10 percent, so we had 8.33 points assigned for last year. The operating deficit calculation, we have not, for the last four years, been under that 1 percent, that minus 1 percent, so we had no points in this calculation. And that kind of shows how close we are to spending what was budgeted. We had two years where we were, we had our revenues came in less than our expenditures by less than 1 percent, and two years where they were more than our revenues, where our revenues were more than our expenditures, again, by less than 1 percent. So we're, we operate very tight, on a very tight budget, so our expenses and our revenues are very, very evenly balanced. Cash position, first one was 113.8 percent, so we had no points in that first year. In 2017, in 2018, again, we dropped down to 85 percent, so we fell into that next category of 3.33 points. The cash percent of monthly expenses, again, we were just over 100 percent in 2017, so we had no points there. And we were down to 70 percent, again, in the second range last year, so we picked up three points there. And the reliance on the short-term cash flow, in fiscal year ending 2017, if you remember those bar charts, the first increase was about 12 and a half percent, so we got all 10 points there. And fiscal year 2018, we had 27, yeah, 27 percent increase, so we got 10 points again there. So that's, that's the number that I felt was not really, not really hits us. I can, I can see the fund balance numbers not so much that tax anticipation note number. So when we look at the totals, fiscal year ending 2017, we had 10 points, which was no designation. In 2018, we're at 33 points, so we're considered susceptible. So that's, that's how we come up with those numbers. On the overview, again, no designation for 2017. 2018, we're in the first level. So there are a couple of the levels. We're in that first level. We're in that first level. We're not sure where we're going to be next year at this point. We do not expect to be susceptible again next year, but I have no guarantees at this point. We have to see where we end. We're watching our budget carefully, and we're going to manage it as we go into this next budget season. What can we do to, you know, keep out of this designation category? Some of the things we look at, don't continue to replenish the retirement system reserve. This is one part of the reserve, that's a restricted portion, that impacts the cash position and impacts a couple of those categories because I have money designated to offset some of our expenditures, which I do every single year. If I don't put money back in that reserve and leave it more in that undesigned category, that'll raise that number, and we'll have a higher cash position. But, we won't have as much money to offset some of our general fund expenditures for retirement system contributions. We can limit the funding of our accrued liabilities reserve. That's a reserve that we have as people retire, leave the district, if they have certain monies that are owed to them, that's a reserve to pay off those expenses. They only get expended when somebody, typically when they retire from the district. So, it's a fairly large reserve, but the state looks at it as a restricted reserve, not part of our cash, but it's part of our liability. So, again, it's a different piece. If we don't fully fund it, we may get a note from the auditors saying we're not fully funded, but maybe that helps us with our designation. So, we've taken the position, you know, both these categories, we want to keep money in the ERS reserve so we can help keep the budget down, and we want to keep fully funded because we didn't want auditor opinion saying we're not fully funded for our crude liabilities. And then the other way is to increase our undesigned amount to over 3%. So, that's, the way we do that, again, is holding off on expenses to whatever we can, trying to keep from spending anything that's unnecessary during the year. If we have staffing changes, to look at if somebody leaves us, do we have to replace that person for the rest of the year? So, these are different things we can do to try to figure out how to keep that number down, or keep the expenses down so we'll have more money to contribute to that undesigned reserve. If there are ways to increase revenues, one of the things we did a couple of years ago is we started to run our summer school program through BOSI's. So, we picked up additional state aid in BOSI's, and we gained additional revenues in that way, the advent of the RISE program. We were able to increase our revenues. We brought back students from our district who were going to out-of-district programs, and paying higher non-resident, higher tuitions for those private schools. We're now running those programs in district, bringing other students from other districts in, and we're generating revenue that way. So, we're constantly looking to do different things that will try to increase our revenues, and again, to keep that fund balance maintained and to effectively manage everything within the district. Again, these are just almost repetition of some of the previous pieces, watching the budget to keep the expenses down, cash position being a function of fund balance, the higher the fund balance, the higher the cash position, and to keep those designated reserves down a little bit, so our short-term liabilities will be down and our cash position will be up. And as I mentioned before, our borrowing should flatten out so that we should not be getting points in those categories going forward. Projections for next year, at this point, I have kind of a range, and these are by no means guaranteed. These are early projections, but our unassigned fund balance, I'm projecting to be somewhere between 2.75 and 3.25%. If we can get it over 3, we'll have 0 points. If we can't, we'll be at 8.33. Our total fund balance will be probably somewhere between 9 and 1/4 and 9.75%. So, we will probably have 8 points there. Our operating deficit, I'm not expecting, again, to be more than 1% in either direction, probably less than 1/2%. So, that won't generate any points. Our cash ratio, I am planning to have over 100%, so we should not have any points there. And it's just a matter of looking at those, that ERS reserve and that crude liability, so I can manage that effectively to keep that down to 0. The percent of the monthly expenses is really going to depend how much we end up with our total expenses at the end of this year. So, that combination of cash and the percent of monthly expense could be somewhere, might be a little above or a little below 100. I can't, I can't tell that right now. So, that could be anywhere from 0 to 3.33%. And our short-term cash flow borrowing, we went up slightly last year, so it was going to be 8% increase, so that's going to generate 6 points. So, my best estimate at this point is we're going to be somewhere between 15 and 26 points at the end of this year. And I think there's a good chance that we'll be in that, you know, no designation category. I mean, if everything goes wrong, we would be just above in the susceptible range. But I'm certainly hoping that we do not get there, and I'm going to be doing everything we can to manage our budget to make sure that we are, have no designation for next year. One last slide I added, it actually just came out this week. Every year, Moody's gives us a rating, and they make an annual comment on our ratings. This was just issued on Monday. They have a couple of different statements within the calculations, and under credit overview states, and this is quote from their report, "The Rockville Center Union Free School District has a very high-quality credit position. Its AA2 rating slightly exceeds the median rating of AA3 for school districts nationwide." Under finances, it says, "The financial position of the district is healthy overall and is comparable to the assigned rating of AA2." And for your information on how Moody's does their ratings, they rate anywhere from AAA all the way down to C. In certain parts of the designations, they add 1s, 2s, and 3s to the designation, 1 being at the top of that range, 2 in the middle, and 3 at the bottom. So, out of all their rating categories, we're kind of third, the third highest. So, that's where we've been. We've been there for a number of years, and that rating has not changed. And you can see from the comments that are in their annual comment on our financial condition, it's not changing, and they consider us still to be in stable financial condition. So, that's where we are. And you have any questions?
Question and a comment. First of all, thank you for the presentation. I think we should have it available on our website or something because it's a great explanation. I think one of the things that the public is concerned about is, it's an uncharted territory for us. We've not received that designation before, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And other districts have fallen into that designation and fallen out of it, so it's not...
Yes.
I think what's important, and I think that what this shows is that there's a reason, we understand it, we can try to work around getting there again, but that it doesn't mean that we're on this kind of sliding slope going downward in a bad direction.
Correct.
So, thank you for putting it together.
Yeah, as I said, the issues with the fund balance, I fully expected because that's kind of where we've been. The point values for the borrowings, I just, I don't understand them because they really have no bearing on our financial condition, just the fact that we, you know, tried to use, be fiscally prudent, not borrow money when we didn't need to borrow money, and now we're getting kind of penalized for that.
Right. So, my question is, with these, we have our auditors work with us a couple of times a year.
Yes.
Now that we had received this designation, is there some way that the auditors, when we were working with them, help us to identify areas that we might be susceptible, knowing what these, what this criteria is? Can we work with them throughout the year to help us kind of tip the scale in the right direction?
Yes, we will be working with them. Typically, our external auditors come in, they start to do their work, usually in the spring. And obviously, they don't finish their work until all the finances are put to bed after year-end, after we close the books. But when they come in the spring, we can speak to them about what they're finding, what they're seeing, and any recommendations they might have to, you know, to keep those numbers where they need to be.
All right. Thank you.
If your auditors hadn't advised anything coming to this susceptibility...
No, there have been no comments from either the internal or the external auditors.
So, we will open the mic right now, just for this topic only. If you want to come to the microphone, just state your name and address, and you can ask your question.
Hello?
Yep.
Sean Bernerhugh, 46 Voorhees Avenue. I was just curious, one of the slides you showed, you said every year, there's a, you're borrowing money, and then in one year, there was a bond issuing. So, is the bond issuing, I'm assuming was done through the financial markets, right?
Yes.
For construction. So, every year, the other borrowings, where's, where, who's the lender? Where are you borrowing money from?
They're from various banks, usually bid on our borrowings. We go out each year, we bid our bonds, we use a financial advisor and bond counsel to do that. They put it out to the general marketplace. There's an invitation to bids, and we typically get anywhere from 8 to 15 bidders. Banks, municipal services will bid on those, bid on those bonds.
And is there an outstanding debt? Or is it, is it short-term borrowing?
All those borrowings are short-term. The bonds for the capital projects is a long-term borrowing. All the tax anticipation notes, they're one-year borrowings, less than one year. Typically, we borrow sometime the end of August, early September, and we pay it back at the end of June.
Okay. So, there's no outstanding debt, other than the long-term bond?
No.
And the bond was used for construction, you said?
Yes, the bond was used for construction. The payments for that, the debt service for that is in the general fund budget. It's within the budget, and we pay that off over 20, 25 years.
Hi, everyone. Janice Griner, 84 Windsor. Tara, you asked if they're going to post this? Is that, are we going to post it on the...
On the website.
On the website.
The whole PowerPoint?
Whole PowerPoint.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions on this presentation? Thank you, and thank you again, Robert, for all your hard work on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert.
So, not that we're letting you off the hook anytime soon, but we are going to move on to our proposed 2019-2020 budget. Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, just very briefly, we always do this at the beginning. We have an opening series of slides that Mr. Bartels will, in fact, utilize. And, is it, are you ready?
It's over there, right?
Oh, it's right here. Chris is first.
Yeah, so if you, just pull it up, but don't, don't start it, Robert. But yes, Dr. Johnson, I'm ready to jump in.
We do it in two pieces. We ask that Dr. Pelletieri provide us with a brief overview of, in fact, what the money that we have within the school district is purchasing and used for. And then we have Mr. Bartels essentially outline our budget process, and in fact, where we probably will end up. So, Dr. Pelletieri?
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. As you can tell already this evening, we are entering budget season. And budget season means lots of PowerPoint presentations and pie charts and numbers and dollars and cents. But before we get into all of that, we really want to stop and remind folks of what really matters and why we are here, and that is our students, our kids, our staff, and what is beyond the numbers or behind the numbers when you stop and look. So, we pause for a moment to take a look at what's beyond the numbers. We have a little bit over $100 million budget that Robert's going to talk about. We tried to make a three-minute video to show what that looks like. Not a simple task. We hope we accomplish some of that here. And if Robert or Jackie want to go ahead and click on this video. So, we supposedly solved our video problems from last time, right? Jackie?
This one, you done with this one?
All right. Let's try to start from the beginning.
There we go.
Yeah, let's jump it back, hit the expanded view.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie.
Let's try to start from the beginning.
There we go.
Yeah, let's jump it back, hit the expanded view.
Thank you, Jackie.
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 Thank you very much. Just again, I got to thank Rob Lichter. Rob Lichter at the high school, and Lauren Filling really worked hard to get my vision for that video together. And it took them some time, actually, the three of us meeting and trying to piece that together, again, trying to think about everything that goes into a budget. Just this last Friday, I observed a class, I took a picture while I was sitting there. It's in that, it's in that video, class over at Wilson School. It just reminded me of the circular aspect to our budget. Last year, we decided to go with a program called Junior Grade Books. It's an outstanding program. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it really talks about Socratic seminar and teaching our students through questioning. So, we made an investment in that program, made an investment in the materials for that program, made an investment in our teachers for that program, brought them in over the summer, taught them, gave them professional development, and had to sit in a classroom and actually see the teachers work, walk through this and work with our students and bring all of that vision to fruition. And all of that, again, part of a budget. You really don't think about that unless you're sitting there and see that unfold in front of you, what it entails and all the work that goes into it. So, it was a pretty happy moment for me to see that that worked out, all those pieces. Again, just a reminder of what's really behind what we're going to be talking about, these dollars and cents and these hard decisions. students and bring all of that vision to fruition. And all of that, again, part of a budget. You really don't think about that unless you're sitting there and, and see that unfold in front of you, what it entails and all the work that goes into it. So it was a pretty, pretty happy moment for me to see that that worked out and all those pieces. Again, just a reminder of what's really behind what we're going to be talking about, these, these dollars and cents and these hard decisions that we're going to be making over the next few months. It's really, it's our, our kids, our students, our staff. It's really important to us. So thank you.
All right, Mr. Bartels?
Okay, now I'll get into the more detailed version, so everybody can go to sleep now. Okay, so we're going to talk a little bit about the proposed budget. I'm not going to go into too much detail tonight. This will be a little shorter presentation than the last one. But I just wanted to kind of give everybody an overview of where we are and where we're going to start. At our next meeting, we'll start to go through a detailed budget and start to look at it a little closer. Just so everybody has a timeline, we really started putting this budget together back in November. So in November, December, we get a lot of input from the principals, the different administrators, and we put our whole budget together. In January, we review it administratively, Dr. Johnson, myself, Dr. Leahy, and Dr. Pelletieri. And we review the different requests. We, today, we are having the overview. I'm going to talk about some changes to the budget process for this year. And next time, we're going to actually have a work session where we go through some of the detail in the budget. Our tax levy limit calculation is due on March 1st. So we have a little bit of time before we have to finalize that number, but that number is pretty much determined for us by the state on a number of different factors. So we will have that number at the February 27th meeting. We'll know what that number is. March 6th, 27th, and April 4th, we have additional budget work sessions scheduled to talk about the budget. On April 16th, we'll have our preliminary budget hearing. That is the date, that is the last date that we can make any changes to the budget. So if we are going to make any, any further changes before we go out to vote, it has to be done on that date. And then May 14th is just a formal date that we're required to have by the state. It's a formal budget hearing. We cannot make any changes at that point. And then May 21st, we actually have the annual election and the budget vote. Wanted to talk a little bit about reassessments. Nassau County is going through a reassessment program. There've been a number, quite a number of articles. I don't know, there's concern by everybody, not only in this community, but in all Nassau County communities. Assessments have been frozen since 2011, with really the only changes being grievances that have been filed to reduce an individual's assessment. Those have been ongoing since those assessments were frozen. And, and really what's been happening is the people that continue to grieve their assessments, from what we understand, just about everybody who grieves them, they granted some form of reduction. Those that don't grieve stay exactly the same as they were the year before. And what's happened is some members of the community have continued to see savings and decreases in taxes where the members of the community whose assessments have stayed the same are paying a higher percentage of the increase. So we always talk every year about what the average increase is going to be, but that's only average based on the entire community. So if you have half the community that is reducing their assessments and the other half that is not, that half that is not is going to pay higher than the average increase in those increases. The tax impact notices for Nassau County were mailed out. Just a couple of notes about them. One is they're doing a comparison of 17, 18 taxes. They're not even comparing the 18, 19 taxes to 20, 21. So they're, they're doing their projections, assuming there's no increase in the taxes, and they're basing it on 2017, 18. So they're already a year behind in what the taxes are. So people need to know that when they look at those numbers, those are today's numbers. They're not what's going to be in 2020, 21. These tax impact notices have no impact on this next budget on 1920. Again, they're for 2021 taxes. So for next year, everybody's assessments are still going to be the same, unless they've grieved them. One of the things that the county has done is they've changed the level of assessment, and that's really a conversion factor. Will they take your assessment? They divide it by this level of assessment to get to the market value. So this change drops it from a quarter of a percent down to 1%. It had been at one point up at 2%, and then it dropped to 1, and now, and it was a quarter for a number of years now. And now they plan to drop it to 0.1. Not sure exactly the impact that all of that is going to have. 0.1%. Not sure what the impact that is going to have, but I believe they're doing it to, to help smooth the increases that are going through. They're talking about a five-year transitional cap. But if, if there is a cap, your taxes could be higher or lower. So if you were planning on going down a great deal, they're going to graduate it down over five years. So the same way, if it's going to go up, they'll graduate it slowly going up for five years. But, so I'm sure the people who plan on having it going down are not going to be too thrilled about that transitional cap. They said they, using the 2017, 18 to project 2021. And I just wanted to note, because we still have time, you have until March 1st, 2019, to grieve your assessments. So based on those tax impact notices, if you're not happy with that, if you want to grieve those notices or grieve that number, you have until March 1st to do that. And the other piece is, there's been no information provided to the school district about what is happening district-wide for Rockville Center taxes. So they can't tell, they, they don't have a number, for example, for, to say, in Rockville Center, your average reduction is going to be 5%, or your average increase is going to be 5%. We've been provided with zero information at this point. The only information that's come out is going to individual homeowners in the form of those tax impact notices. Second item I wanted to talk about was funding transparency. In this next budget, we are required to break it down differently than we have in the past. The state has instituted new comparisons that they want to do. They want to see your breakdown of your expenses by building. They really want to see instructional expenses only. I thought this was interesting, that they're just looking for instructional expenses, which many times are difficult to break down by building, and they could vary. So if you have a more senior staff, it looks, going to look like you have more expenses in your building. If you have younger staff, it looks like fewer expenses. Also, if you have different programs. We have the Core Program at Covert, so that building is going to look a little bit different than Watson's going to look, who doesn't have that Core Program. Also, as I said, it's instructional only. So things that are more easily broken out, like gas and electric and things which we have bills by building, they don't care about that. They don't want to see that separately. So we do happen to break that out anyway. So we're trying to, as we go through the budget, try to break all those things out. I know one of the pieces that's going to be difficult is Mr. Pelletieri's budget. Won't surprise him. He buys instructional materials for all of our buildings. We're supposed to identify which buildings he's buying those materials for. So he'll go out, he'll buy new reading materials for a new reading program, and he'll provide it to each of our five elementary schools. But he does it within his budget, which is one budget. The state wants us to show how much money was allocated to each school for each of those expenses. So this is going to become an extremely difficult process. And in, in some part, we're going to have to break it down on a percentage basis. So using that example, that's something we're going to have to do next year. When we report our expenses, we're going to have to take that expense and just break it down percentage-wise by the buildings. I've gone through and recalculated a lot of what we need to do is terms of personnel expenses. So virtually all of our person, instructional personnel expenses will now be broken down by building. So it's going to be very difficult to try to compare one year to the next. It always is with staffing because of changes in turnover. So we'll may present some other information as we go through the budget process in terms of summary information, so we can see more comparisons of what happened to our total staffing, our total teacher staffing, for example, because you're not going to be able to see it within the budgets because they're going to be so different. Some of the regular issues that are impacting the, the budget this year. The CPI, we have the tax cap. CPI increase was above 2%, it was 2.13%. So again, we are at that maximum 2% cap for next year. There is another factor called the allowable growth factor. That's the growth of the assessment base within the community for new construction. For Rockville Center for this year is 0.58%. And due to some of the different exemptions we have in our revenues and our expenses, our tax levy limit will be about 2.66%. And we'll finalize that number at the next meeting, but for all intents and purposes, that's where the number's going to be. I talked about, we need to balance our budget. Each year, we look at our revenues, match them up against our expenditures. So on the revenue side, this year, we had a little bit of a problem. We had state aid, which came in several hundred thousand dollars less than what we had budgeted. So our revenues for this current year, in the form of state aid, are not where we were expecting them to be. So when I look at next year and projections for next year, I have to look at that carefully and back off that just a little bit.
It may be worthwhile saying that, understand that the estimates that you provided and that were placed in the budget didn't come from us. We didn't invent those numbers. They came to us from the state initially.
Correct.
So that the numbers that they gave us from the state that we anticipated receiving were wrong. And so the underestimation was on the part of the state, not on us. So we came in less than what the state had said we were going to come in on all the expense-driven aids.
Is there an explanation to how they were wrong?
They, they claim it's due to an audit and that everything is based upon our initial filings with the state, which is the ST3. And then ultimately, it's based on an audit that is done of all of the state expenses in every school district in November. And it's at that point that they finalize the actual costs that they will now aid in each of these categories. And it was considerably less than what they originally had placed in their budget, and consequently, our numbers were, were, were lower than what we anticipated. Nothing that this guy did. It was not him.
Next piece, on the positive side, non-resident tuitions. I talked a little bit before about the RISE program. We had a significant increase in our revenues from non, from those tuition students that we have attending those programs within our district. So that increase made up for the kind of offset the state aid. So again, both those numbers will be looked at carefully in this year's planning. We've had quite a few homeless students in Rockville Center. I'm not sure why. In the last couple of years, we seem to have increased dramatically. One of the positives that we found in that is we're beginning to get state aid for homeless students. So we are getting part of that, of those students, additional funding for them. So that's, that was a positive. And our pilot payments, they're increasing due to our Avalon projects, but that's unfortunately one of the things that does not, that, that gets put into the tax cap formula. So it's, it doesn't gain us that much. It's, it's, it does offset the increase in the taxes, but it really doesn't change what we can increase the budget by. That really keeps, keeps those, that budget increase down, the tax increase down. On the expense side, we're looking at some changes in the high school curriculum with our special ed program. We've talked about that a few times. There's new mandate from state education to provide guidance for the elementary students. So we're looking at how we're going to accomplish that for next year. We've had some continuing concerns about E and L support. We are looking at our current year staffing additions that were not in the budget. Each year, we budget a certain amount for our staffing. Aides and teaching assistants in particular can vary due to needs within the district for one-to-one students, for inclusion sections. So those numbers vary. We've had an increase of those during the year this year, so that's adding to the budget and the increase for next year. So we're looking at those numbers closely. Our legal services have increased in the past year due to impartial hearings that we've had to deal with, with some parents in regards to their students who go to out-of-district schools where we feel they belong in one environment and the parents feel they belong in another environment. Our capital project work, any increase in that is offset. We have some declining debt service. So some of the increases in our capital projects are going to be offset by declining debt services here. Health insurance, we got some positive news for January. We did not get very large premium increases, or about 2% increase for this year. So that was a positive. However, we can't be guaranteed that, and we need to look at those increases each year between the premiums. Also Medicaid reimbursements continue to go up, as well as people affording themselves of the Affordable Care Act. We do for all of our full-time staff members who don't get health insurance, they are allowed to join the Affordable Care Act. So we would have to pay for those expenses, and we were finding a few more people this year did opt into that program. So that, that cost us a little extra money. Our tan interest costs, which are based on our borrowings, we're looking at that each year. We have to be careful with that as some of the rates are going up a little bit now. Those costs could magnify based on the amount of our borrowings. Out-of-district tuitions, in addition to the legal services going up, the actual costs of those hearings, when there's a decision against us and we have to now pay for tuitions and transportation for some of those students who end up going out of district. ERS and TRS mandated expenses, hopefully that should be relatively stable for next year. As far as the expenses go, again, we're looking at reserves and utilizing part of our reserve to pay for that ERS. But again, the more we use that, the less we're going to have in that area. TRS has been a positive this year. We have a decline in that contribution percentage for this year, for next year. So that number will decline a little bit. We are being warned by the retirement system that this is, may just be the last year that they go down because of unstable rates that they've been experiencing through the stock market. So they base their percentage on a five-year rolling average. So we're having a year where they had, five years ago, had picked up, I think, 18%. So that number's dropping off. So for that number to be replaced, it's got to be replaced by another number up there to keep, keep the retirement system contribution number pretty much even. But for next year, we've got a little positive news. We'll be able to drop a little bit in our budget, but not, not too much. And then negotiations. It's unknown. Our teacher contract is expiring at the end of June. We're in the process of negotiations now. So again, as we go through the budget process, we'll be going through negotiations and see how that plays out. One of the calculations I did want to give you was the tax cap, since we do pretty much know that at this point. The allowable increase due to the tax cap, I talked about before, the 2% and the, and the other exemptions that we have and the allowable growth factor ends up being 2.38%. With our capital exemptions, we're, we can get another 0.28% in there. So that's, brings the total maximum increase that we can have to 2.66% for next year. So that's, that's the maximum. The tax cap we could have without exceeding the cap would be $2,537,000. At this point, we're going to project $2,527,000. We like to keep it a little under that, just in case there's any slight errors in that calculation. So again, the tax levy will be under the tax cap. We are not projecting to increase taxes above the tax cap. We need a supermajority to pass the budget. So we plan on being under that tax cap. So we plan on being under that tax cap for next year. Just where we are, this year's budget is a little over $117 million. With the increases based on the tax cap and the exemptions, we could increase that budget by about 2.5 million or 2.16%. So any increase over and above that, if we can move an increase above that, we have to generate additional revenues in some other way, whether it's through non-resident tuitions, state aid, summer school programs, things like that, project rate would have to be, because that's the most we can raise taxes by, is about $2.5 million. And I just have the, this is the chart from 2018, '19. '19, '20 will look very similar. It just shows that more than 75% of the budget goes to payroll and benefits. And then you see the pieces of the budget, but you know, the great majority of our budget is really in staffing. So that's where we are. We are still working on finalizing the last little pieces of the budget. We will have that next time to go over. But at this point, we plan on having a balanced budget to present to you and to the public when we begin the budget discussions. So we're not looking at any holes for next year. We're expecting to have total revenues matching our total expenditures for next year. So that's where we are, but we'll have that in detail at the next meeting.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll open the mic again for questions pertaining to the budget. Again, state your name and your address, please.
Sean Bernabéu, 464 East. Can you give a little detail on the non-resident and homeless population?
The non-residents are students who are going to our core or RISE programs. We have the core program at Covert, the middle school and high school, and the RISE program we have at Hewitt School. It's just an elementary program right now. Homeless students, we have, I was going to say approximately 20 homeless students in district now, which is up. We used to have four to eight students. We're now up to about 20 students for this year.
Where are they from?
They're from different, could be any different homes, different places. They're now residing in Rockville Center in various locations. I'm not even sure, maybe Noreen knows a little bit more about where they're located.
Well, they're located in a variety of communities. If they were displaced from Rockville Center, they still have the option of attending our schools. That's one of the options. The whole idea of meeting the needs of homeless students is educational stability. So if they were living in Rockville Center and displaced somewhere else, they may be still attending our schools. Or they may have been displaced from another community into Rockville Center, doubled up with relatives, living in a hotel, other various temporary living arrangements. And then they would have the option of coming to our schools as well.
You said there was state aid for the homeless?
It's money we're getting through the state for homeless students, yes.
Perception is that maybe it creates an incentive to take in more homeless students?
Well...
Well, we don't take them in, just, you need to understand. It's their choice, not ours. The way in which McKinney-Vento works, and you may want to explain this, Noreen, we don't designate the school to which they, if they were a resident here and displaced, this is their home school district, this is where they come. We don't solicit homeless.
Right.
They choose Rockville Center.
Students that become, you know, people become homeless for a variety of reasons. And many of our families were originally living here and were displaced from Rockville Center and have the ability to stay. So they're our residents that fell on hard times and were displaced and maybe doubled up with relatives or for whatever reason had to leave their home here, and they're now in temporary housing. The opposite does occur, where there's DSS or for other reasons, people end up living in Rockville Center and they were attending schools in other districts. And then they have the option. They can opt to go to the school where, from the school of, district of origin where they were displaced, or they can opt to go to school in their new district. Most people make that decision based on any kind of idea of long-term placement so that they can keep their children as stable as possible. And that's our goal, is to keep kids stable when they're in those situations.
Yeah, if somebody, for example, is living in Long Brook, Long Beach, and they become displaced, and now they're living in Oceanside, they can't come to Rockville Center schools. It's only if they started in Rockville Center or are now living in Rockville Center. If they came from or left Rockville Center and they become homeless, that's when they have the ability to come here.
Okay.
Brian McNamara, 450 Laurel Road. Can you speak a little bit about how the non-tuition or the non-resident tuition is derived?
Non-resident tuition is based on a formula that the state generates. It's based on our financial statements at the end of the year. We're required to submit something called an ST3, which is a detailed breakdown of where all of our expenses are categorized. So that's, I mean, it's a very complicated formula, but it's on state education website. It's available if somebody wanted to take a look at it, how it's calculated. But it basically breaks down our expenses in terms of our special ed costs and our regular education costs. And it creates a, through the formula, creates a resident tuition for our regular education students, which we don't have any students here of regular education from other districts, or a special ed tuition for elementary students and for secondary students. So there's two different tuitions, one elementary, one secondary. And that's what we use to charge based on the age of the student.
Do you think it's a fair assessment, a fair calculation?
Yes, it is fair.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Just also want to mention, I know we had mentioned posting these things on our website so that people could access them. We're also going to be posting things in Spanish as well. Outside the room, we have our budget presentation available in Spanish, our pride survey. This is due to a percentage of the population who speaks Spanish only. So going forward, you're going to be seeing more documents that are also translated into Spanish and things that Chris later on will tell us about how you can do that on the website as well. So just wanted to mention that.
They're posted and translated. They would not be speaking Spanish.
Well, they won't be speaking, that's true. Right.
I will not be speaking Spanish.
Right. If you call us for the snow day, I would like you to speak Spanish and tell us that. All right, thank you again for the presentations. So we're going to move on to our policies. We're in stage two on a few policies, starting with policy 5330, and that's for budget transfers. Again, we're in stage two. Any questions from the board? Okay, so we'll move that one forward, thank you. Policy 8260, which is parent and family engagement. Any questions from the board?
I just, at our last meeting when we spoke about this, I just wanted, as I was looking at it again, reading this policy, we must have a compact team dedicated to this or a compact team from every school, and we don't right now. So going forward, we will have to ensure that every school has a compact team?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that because we went sort of back and forth at our last meeting about it.
Right. You know, every year, we send out the nominations for membership on it, and some of our elementaries, we have to do diligence.
But this seems very specific.
It is.
Because our compact teams right now are run by our principals, and they sort of pick what they want to do themselves. This seems like it's very specific about what a compact team needs to be.
Yep.
So I just wanted to make, clarify that that's, this is what we'll, we're going to follow this.
It's, yes, it's in our policy.
Yeah, we don't have a choice.
Correct.
Yeah, this is, this is again, one of those things where the state has kind of interceded on their behalf, and it's basically dictating to us what that compact team looks like and how it's going to operate.
Okay. Okay. Also, Jackie, on page two at the bottom in E, like the second sentence, it just says the compact, I think it should say the compact team.
Okay. Okay, so Jackie, we'll make that one change and we can move it forward. Thank you. 7133, education of students in foster care. Any questions from the board? Okay, then we'll move that one forward, thank you. And finally, 5551, allocation of Title I Part A funds in the district. Any questions from the board? Okay, so we'll move that one in as well, thank you so much. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the January 23, 2019 meeting?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, the audit meeting as well, there's two meetings.
Okay. That's okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the Audit Committee meeting on January 23rd?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve financial reports as listed?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve receipt of financial reports as listed?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Johnson, I understand we have a gift?
Yes, we have an opportunity to have stand-up desk for every classroom at Wilson School. It's being a gift of $3,500 from Atlantic Philanthropies to purchase one of these for each of the classrooms in the building, so.
Do we know what they're going to be used for? There'll be one in each classroom, but do we know what they'll be used for?
I assume that it's going to be used by the children. You know, what's interesting is that it says here that it's for students to use on a rotating basis. I mean, if you take a look at many offices now, there are these stand-up desks. We have them in the central office right now. People prefer to stand than to sit. I think what we're going to do is test out the concept to see if it works with some of our children as well. So we're not getting them, you know, we're not going to fill a classroom with them, but at least they'll be one in every one of the classrooms to see how the kids adjust to them.
Nice. Do a motion. Okay, so can I have a motion to accept the gift?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you very much, Atlantic Philanthropies.
Very cool.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Well, the classroom of the future may be having, you know, standing from, dawned.
Well, Jackie can tell us how she likes her stand-up desk, because she has it.
Yes.
It's nice, okay.
I imagine you have kids who want to bite.
Right, stand structure.
It's good for the...
Moving on. Can I have a motion to approve items A through F and the addendum as listed?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Just want to point out, passing a resolution for the May 21, 2019 annual election and budget vote, the petitions are available with the district clerk at this time. There is one Board of Education seat open and two library seats open. Okay, and can I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss specific negotiation matters?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Our next meeting is a regular meeting with a budget work session on February 27. Thank you, good night.